So if we could have a motion to accept tonight's agenda, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So Dr. Harrison, onto you for district updates. But before we do that, I'm just going to again remind everyone who is participating remotely that there will be two periods for public comment, one before the presentation, one after the presentation, after Dr. Harrison completes his updates. If you want to make a comment in the initial comment period, please put your name and address in the chat function and you'll then be recognized as a reminder. We let everyone get a turn to speak before we will potentially call on anyone a second time. So if you do choose to speak in the initial period, you will not be afforded an opportunity in the second period until after everyone has had a chance to speak. And then, time permitting, we will then potentially allow for additional comments. Also, to the extent that multiple members from a family would like to speak, or allotted three minutes amongst yourselves, we'll want to allow whatever families do so. So we will ask that you only speak one thing. We will go from there. So with that, Dr. Harrison, onto updates, please.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, tonight, we're looking forward to another informative update on the reopening of school. So I look forward to providing that information to the school community. However, before we get there, I think there's a few important items to share. Today, we had the great pleasure of welcoming our new faculty and staff members to the school district with our new staff orientation. I want to thank Ms. Ellis and a number of my colleagues for organizing this fantastic event. I have to say that I was completely, completely impressed by the level of engagement and the enthusiasm that these professionals had in coming to the meeting today, but also with the commitment and real passion they have for being a part of our school community. Thus, today was really a phenomenal day that was energizing on my end and really has me optimistic thinking about their future careers in Irvington. So with all of them, many of them, I believe, are going to be joining the meeting tonight to watch. I welcome them and I wish them great success here in the Irvington district. Over the next two days, we are also going to have our administrative retreat. It is two days where the entire administrative team comes together and we share in professional learning and really participate in some deep levels of planning for the coming school year. Tomorrow, we're looking forward to a full day of professional learning that will be facilitated by Castle on the topic of social emotional learning to help provide us with a foundation to lead the work that we're going to share with them and our faculty, staff, and school community in developing a comprehensive, well-articulated K-12 SEL program. So tomorrow is the second critical step in that process, the first having been the Castle visit last year and now this launch of the work here in the district in the 2021 school year. The final point and something that I want to speak to because I think it's truly critical and something that I have committed to on behalf of the school district and made that commitment to our school community is that we are in the process of engaging in really a deep, long work with NYU's Metro Center. On the agenda tonight is the authorization for the Board of Education to grant me the authority to sign a contract that is truly a comprehensive program, a program that's going to start on the First Superintendent's Conference Day, where we're going to have a keynote address for all of our faculty and staff that will be followed by a one-hour breakout session in each building. We are also contracting with NYU to facilitate eight school-level building workshops. That'll be two workshops in each of our school buildings during the course of the school year. We then are going to have a cohort of our faculty, staff, and administration that will participate in a LEAD-Learner culturally responsive education training program. This is an extensive training program that will span this school year into the fall of '21. This will provide deep knowledge, critical skill, to help transition the work and thinking and programs in our school district and will equip the individuals who will participate in the program to become leaders in this work in our school district and provide them with the capacity to be able to lead their own professional development within Irvington. And then, the final and truly a critical component is a root cause analysis. In a root cause analysis, the partners at NYU will really come in and pull back the curtains on so much of that we do here in our school community. They will look at our policies, they will look at our practices, procedures, things such as our code of conduct, how we enroll students, and how students become eligible for certain types of courses, and then look at program offerings and other opportunities that are available in our school district. The effort here is to make sure that we remove any barriers for access for all of our students. And certainly, we look at this through the lens of our BIPOC students, students of color, and to ensure that everyone has the same level of access to all programs and opportunities. That will be a process where we will put together a representative community that will work with our partners from NYU to be able to lead this work, to be able to delve into the data and all the different resources that they need. And then, from there, by the end of the year, NYU will produce a strategic plan that will guide our work on the topics of equity, diversity, and access in the Irvington schools. I anticipate that this will be a multi-year process as we really look to grow and remove barriers that may be before some members of our school community. So I want to thank certainly everyone in the community that has been a part of the discussion thus far. I also want to thank members of the PTSA Diversity Committee for their great work in partnership. This is costly work, but it is a worthwhile and necessary investment on behalf of our school community. And I deliberately say "school community" because this is a cost that we are going to share. I anticipate writing grants to our partner organizations, the PTSA and the IAF, who are eager to work with us on this front. And I have mentioned in the past that the Irvington Faculty Association has already come forth and donated $1,000 to not only offset the costs, but to show their dedication and commitment to this work as well. So once we have the contract or the board gives me the authority to sign the contract this evening, we look forward to beginning the planning process of that work that will kick in right in as school opens, as I said, with training for all of our faculty and staff on the Superintendent's Conference Day on September 2nd. So while we're working through some difficult times, there's a lot of excitement that is behind the work. I think when we think of all the work that's happening, the enthusiasm of our new faculty and staff members that we met with today, the deep dive into SEL that our administrators will participate in tomorrow, and this partnership with NYU, we are really in a position where we're going to move beyond the challenges of reopening. We're going to be able to step aside from the concerns related to COVID, and together, we're going to help build and strengthen our school community. So I think see this as a great opportunity for all of us and work that I'm truly enthused to partner in with our full school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So we're now at our first opportunity for community comment related to topics that appear on the agenda. So if anyone would like to make a comment now, please put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom and you'll be recognized. So I'll give everyone a moment to hear if there's anyone who wants to speak now. Otherwise, we'll move on to the presentation. Well, seeing none, we will move on to our update regarding the reopening of schools, and there'll be another opportunity for community comment later in the evening. So with that, Dr. Harrison, back to you.
Good evening, once again. I'm glad to be able to provide some updates for our school community and some critical updates related to ongoing work that we have participated in our in our school district to really attempt to enhance all of our planning towards reopening. Tonight, I plan to cover a number of important areas and many items that we have discussed along the way, and then to introduce a couple new points that are critical for all parents in our school community and for discussion with the Board of Education. As you can see, the first item that I plan to discuss tonight is the kindergarten first grade proposal recommendation, cohort model update and review. So thinking of how the kindergarten and first grade recommendation may affect cohorts, a K-12 schedule overview and how that works, a distance learning option update, revised phase-in opening calendars, and a reopening planning update. I would say where some of these items may seem old hat, there are some critical updates involved in each of them and some areas where we should have some enthusiasm and other areas where we should have concern and need to proceed with caution. So that said, to first speak of the kindergarten and first grade experience. So last week, we reconvene the Curriculum and Instruction reopening subcommittee to evaluate the proposal that we put forth, that we'd be looking to have our kindergarten and first grade students attend school four half-days per week. The committee, after some thoughtful review and an expanded committee, I should say, with some additional parents and Dowsling educators involved, really took a close look at this, and they found that it is completely a viable option, and thus, we recommend moving forward with this opportunity for our students. So when we step back and take a look at this, it would play out as such. Cohort A would attend the AM session, which would be from 8:00 AM to 10:45 AM. Cohort B would attend school from 11:45 AM to 2:30 PM. The students will participate on this onsite learning four days per week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. There will also be asynchronous distance learning that will occur on the four days that they attend school in person. Students will also have a day of distance learning on Wednesday. I want to say that this recommendation is not only something that was very popular with many folks in our community, was well-received by the Board of Education when we discussed it at our last meeting, but it really has the support of our educators and our administration. And without that level of support and dedication, we wouldn't be able to proceed. So I look at this as a true community effort, where we received significant feedback that pursuing this model was a priority. It had the support of the educators and the administrators in the school district. We've also worked through a number of areas associated with this that I'll cover in a second that the community does need to be aware of. But when I think of this model, I also want to clarify a few items here. So if we take a look at just how the school day will function with Cohort A and B and the hours that they respectively operate, you can see that in the middle of that day, we're going to have transportation runs that will occur. For this to be able to count as a full school day, and mind you, the State Education Department truly calculates our responsibilities for having 180 school days and a certain number of hours within a school year. Therefore, it is essential for students to be able to complete some work independently outside of school to ensure that we are providing for that comprehensive school experience. In all cases, our students will achieve the curriculum objectives that we have set forth respectively for kindergarten and first grade. However, when we think of the work that can occur outside of the school day, there's flexibility with families and the time in which it's completed, so as long as it is completed. That work is going to need to be completed in a timely manner, but it's not necessarily going to be strictly time-driven. We also have to understand that because of the fact that our kindergarten and first grade teachers are going to be teaching separate cohorts in the AM and in the PM, they aren't going to be immediately available to support the needs of students at home. However, the one thing that we have to keep in mind, if your child attends the AM session and is working on some work independently, asynchronous, in the afternoon, they're going to be back in school most days the next day, with the exception that you hit a Friday or a Tuesday where you're going to have that gap. So there's going to be plenty of opportunity for teacher support and teacher engagement. So when we think of this, not everything comes free, as we well know. I want to thank Carol Stein for putting together an overview of what the anticipated expenditures will be. We understand that this additional transportation route, so that'll be in the midday, that will be returning our AM cohorts home, and in midday, picking up our afternoon cohorts, we have additional bus routes that we'll have to pay for. We're estimating that cost to be approximately $35,000. When we think of that middle chunk of the day, when the students are not in school, that is going to be the time when our teachers have their lunch, when there's planning time, preparatory time that is necessary. And therefore, we need to make sure that we have proper supervision for our students that are being dismissed and the students that are now coming to school for the PM session. Therefore, we're in a position where we're going to need to make sure we have staff available, and we'd have to supplement our existing staff. So we are looking for monitors that will be able to come and provide that level of supervision. There'll be all folks that not only would be compensated by the district, but trained by the district, fingerprinted to be cleared to work in schools, and they will manage students during that midday time. We also understand that there's additional custodial costs that will be included in this, another $13,000, to make sure that we're doing an adequate job and a thorough job in cleaning all of the school spaces in the kindergarten and first grade. We are going to have to supplement our additional staff, understanding that our daytime staff in Dowsling will be busy supporting other essential operations in the school. In particular, you think of that period of time, lunch is the time when our custodians are quite, quite busy. So there's some additional costs that come with this. The total expenditure is an estimated $61,000 for the K-1 program. Additionally, the we have heard feedback from from some community members, but importantly, the Subcommittee for Reopening that focuses on curriculum and instruction is also interested in further exploring the opportunity for second through fifth graders. However, I want to really manage expectations here by stating that even though we're going to be taking a look at grades two through five for a similar half-day, four-day-a-week model, we are not going to be prepared to provide a recommendation before the start of the school year. Therefore, all of our students, two through 12, will follow the models that had been previously presented to the Board of Education and the school community. So when we think of the cohort models, obviously, there's some fluctuation that occurs based upon that adjustment. So when we think of the cohort, there's some shifts here in how it breaks out and simply stated that we're looking at pulling our K-1 students out of that mix, and those that would have been Cohort A will now be the morning session in grades K-1. Cohort B then would have similar type impact whereby they would then be in a PM session. So now, I want to give a little window into the schedule and a reminder of what that looks like. So this is, again, I'm separating out here for you, grades two through 12, that will follow the hybrid schedule that we had reviewed in the past because K-1 will be following their own unique schedule that I highlighted a moment before. Recently, we also took a look at a distance learning opportunity where we enabled parents to opt into a distance learning experience 100% of the time for their children. Here, there were two different tiers of surveys. One was for parents expressing their interest in the survey, and then after they expressed interest in a survey, I followed up with them with a communication whereby they had to then register their children for this experience. So when we think of the 100% distance learning, I know that I, in prior meetings, really spoke about, and I spoke passionately about my belief that students have great benefit from being in the classroom before our talented teachers, and I stand by that tonight. However, what I do want to clarify for everybody is that I do not believe that students participating in 100% distance option will necessarily have an inferior experience. What they will lack is that regular in-person engagement with their teachers and with classmates. However, those students will continue, all students will be working towards hitting the same curricular objectives. They will participate in the same learning experiences. While learning from home, their teachers certainly will be engaging with them at home. There will still be the streaming video opportunities that we've discussed along the way, and Google Meets in which the students will engage. So I want to clarify those past remarks because I want to give assurance to our school community that our students will receive a quality education, that our teachers will continue to do a fabulous job in preparing our students for the next grade level. But unfortunately, we're just going to miss that in-person experience. So with that clarity behind us, I do want to draw your attention back to the slide that many of you have been looking at while I talked for the last three or four minutes, and looking at the distance learning enrollment that we have seen thus far. The deadline to enroll was Friday at 5:00 PM, and at that point in time, we had 152 students enroll in that option, and which, looking at our overall student enrollment of 1725, that equates to about 8.8% of our students enrolling in that. It's a little bit less than where I was projecting we were going to be a week ago. However, we have had outreach from a few other parents that had difficulty with the registration, so I know there's a few more students filtering in, but I still anticipate that number will remain ballpark around that 9%, 10% level. So when we think about our readiness to open the school year, we talked about the importance of having a phased-in approach. When we did this and had conversations earlier in our process, we thought about all of the needs that were present here in our school community. We wanted to make sure that we were able to support our teachers in the transition back to school. We wanted to make sure that our students had a gradual move back into the schooling experience. So when we think about this, there's lots of other things that come into play. We have lots of materials that are on order that I will talk about towards the end of the presentation this evening. We need to make sure that we have as many of those items in-house and installed or equipped to support learning as necessary. One of those items is the necessary signage and guidance around how to students are going to act, and I'm looking to Ms. Stein, who actually, while you may not be able to see them at home, she has samples of some of the anti-slip decals that we have ordered that will be installed throughout our schools. We have a lot of PPE in stock, but we're still waiting for more. So for example, we have over 10,000 disposable masks in-house, but we're waiting for face shields to arrive that we want to be able to provide our teachers, should they desire. Our maintenance staff is doing an amazing job installing barriers for spaces where we have concern about being able to maintain that six-foot distance between folks, and they're doing a fabulous job. We want to make sure that we do our best to kick off the school year on the right foot. So that is not only from that idea of thinking about operations where we have a lot of protocols to implement, but also instruction. By taking a look at that phase-in approach that we had, we would be providing that time and opportunity for our teachers to really have an additional layer of input into all those protocols as they operate in the building and to be best prepared to be able to support the delivery of distance learning. When we're thinking about this as well, we're thinking about the need to make sure that we have a proper amount of time for travel quarantine. And as much as I've given cautions to the school community, and anytime you listen to our governor, he gives similar reminders, we've asked that folks stay local, only travel to areas that are on the okay list. We know of many cases where folks have traveled to states that will require quarantine, whether folks have been open and honest about it or not. So what I'm proposing today will address all of these areas, including the travel quarantine. What I am suggesting that we take a look at doing is modifying this phase-in by slowing it down a little bit. In doing so, we would look at the first two weeks of school being 100% distance learning. So that would be the first week following Labor Day and the first full school week in September. So the 8th through the 18th of September, we'd be in 100% distance learning. And then come the 21st, the third week of September, our elementary grades and looking at K-1, 2, 3, and then Main Street, 4, 5, would immediately go into the model that we have planned for them. So our K-1 students would go into the four-half-day model. Our grades 2, 3, 4, 5 will begin the hybrid model. That would be a full-fledged integration at that point in time. And then, our middle school and high school during that third week would participate in that partial hybrid model, where students would attend one day a week in our schools. And then, the following week, the 29th through October 2nd, we'll have full implementation of our reopening plan. So the rationale behind this, I really think I highlighted why it is necessary and important for us to make sure that we have that appropriate time for the phase-in whereby we'd have two weeks of 100% distance learning. Here, again, it gives teachers that opportunity to test out new technologies. It gives students that opportunity to get back on track with school routines and following those regular school schedules. And then, as we phase in on the 21st through the 25th, we're confident that our elementary students and teachers will be able to jump right into the program, our reopening plan. And the reason why I would differentiate that from the middle school and high school is pretty simple. Our elementary students pretty much stay in one place. They're not moving from class to class throughout the day. There's that not, not the same level of contact and movement throughout the school campus. Whereas our middle school and high school students, there's lots of pedestrian traffic throughout our schools. So when we think about that and we think about how we're going to observe those traffic patterns, think about how we may need to adjust some of those directions we have traffic moving in certain hallways or certain stairways, or if we want to give consideration to the fact that we may want to stagger some class period time so as not to have congestion in the hallways, that week, the week of the 21st through the 25th, will really give us that opportunity to pilot all of those protocols. It'll give opportunity for our staff and administration to get feedback from students and to take those observations from our students and those of their own to make sure that we're well-equipped to welcome everybody back the following week. So with that said, I've taken liberty of truly mapping out what September and October would look like in each of our schools. And you'll notice the color coding, that translates going back to the cohort groupings that we referenced before. The only differentiation here from the colors is the K-1 groupings, which are really on their own schedule. So this is an overview of what I just reviewed on the past slide, again, reminding everyone that we have two holidays in the month of September. So this really could become, this slide, one of those refrigerator documents, a document that you throw up on a bulletin that you throw up on a bulletin board in your house to be mindful of what we're doing each and every day in our schools. Similarly, I created a model looking at October, a model that again carries everything out. And I think this is truly a great illustration for what a month, typical month would look like, where we do have that Wednesday flex day. And then we also have the flow of all the other routines that are a part of our school schedule. While I referred a moment ago to this being a good refrigerator model, I can assure you that we have prepared one for you. While we hope that we're not in a position whereby we are in this hybrid model for the entire school year, we have created models and schedules that would map out these rotations for the entire school year. They will be posted on the reopening website and distributed by our school principals. So health and safety. I understand that these are all critical, important items, items that I discussed in great detail with my partners, Ms. Stein and Ms. Ellis, over the last two presentations. I would draw your attention to those presentations where the presentation materials and the videos of the presentations are all posted on the website, where we spoke about the general protocols that we have in place for school visitors, social distancing, face masks, as I'm fidgeting with a brand-new face mask tonight that doesn't stay up, handwashing and hygiene, cleanings and sanitation, sanitization in our schools, transportation, food services, ventilation, air circulation, health screening, COVID-19 testing, contact tracing, and school closures. Know that I am putting together a user-friendly document that is going to give an overview of all these areas, the procedures that we are going to employ in the school districts, and requirements that will be before our students and our staff this school year. You should anticipate receiving that document, which will also be posted on the reopening website within the next week. So planning is a key part of all that we're doing. And this is an area where I think we all need to slow down. I can tell you that I've been very proud of the work that we've done here in the school district. And in large part, we're ready to roll. But thinking about that, there's areas where we have to proceed with caution. So if we think back to this, these similar presentations and these slides previously, we had ordered 500 Chromebooks. We increased that number because of some of our annual replacement that was necessary. And we had promises from vendors that these were going to arrive a couple of weeks ago. Aside from the diligence of our, our staff, the order dates keep, or arrival dates keep getting pushed back. So right now, we are looking at delivery of our Chromebooks within the first week of September. I know many school districts that are looking end of September, October, and November for Chromebooks. There's lots of stories that we're hearing as to why this is the case. We're told that certain media companies have gone well beyond their capacity to be able to make more devices at this point in time. We also have heard stories about cargo ships that were turned around that were coming from China and were turned around and not allowed to port in the United States because of human rights violations in China. And in doing so, these ships were loaded with technology devices, included cameras and Chromebooks and laptops and the like. So across the board, there's a tremendous shortage. We're doing our best to source these items. We're going to different vendors and we're literally comparing one to the other. If we can get one here a week sooner, we're going to change our order from one company to another. So we're working on that diligently. Right now, we are coming up with a Plan B. In the event, we have to stagger the release of the one-to-one devices. And we actually have staff that were in the building tonight, will be in the building tomorrow, inventorying and testing every single one of the several hundred Chromebooks and all of the laptops that we have in district. And we will communicate with the school community as to what that plan will look like in the coming week. We have ordered classroom cameras that have microphones embedded in them, and they have been delivered and installed in our classrooms. One new initiative that we have actually launched is that we are purchasing earbuds with a microphone embedded in, in the cord for every single student in the school district. So we look at this to benefit us in two different ways. One being situations whereby a student is working at home and there, there are parents that working from home, there are other siblings working from home, where there could be lots of background noise and the audio from one's Google Meet could interfere with the others' learning. So now by purchasing relatively affordable earbuds, we will alleviate that concern. Additionally, when we think about students in a classroom participating in a Google Meet with students at home or staff that is not in the building, if we have the audio on my device and across the room, my classmate has theirs on, we will get all kinds of feedback and it will be challenging to communicate. So by having the earbuds with the individual microphones, we'll be able to eliminate a lot of that feedback and allow for productive conversations to occur through Google Meets with multiple people in a common space. Thinking about health screening, screening, we will have an app that we will introduce next week, an app that will be linked from that document that I referenced, the user guide to reopening. And that will be a requirement for every student and staff member to complete each morning before reporting to school. Staffing needs, and if you're following school reopenings across the country, across the state, across Westchester, staffing needs is becoming the number one concern. The number two concern is the access and the availability of technology and, but staffing needs is really a serious concern. So when we look at this, there's a growing need of staff members in all school communities, including Irvington, where staff are putting in requests for leaves of absence, for medical accommodations that have impacts on school operations. In Irvington, we have many staff members that have put in for either leaves of absence or accommodations that may require them to protect their health to teach from home. So in cases where we have a teacher that is able to teach, but because of their personal needs, unable to be present in a school building where they may be at greater risk to contracting COVID, we would have students teaching from home, teachers teaching from home. So they would be interacting with children, distance learning, as well as the children in the classroom via Google Meets. So in doing so, you can see the example of why those earbuds are necessary and will be of great assistance. But where a challenge comes up here is from a fiscal standpoint, is that while that teacher's at home, we still need staff to be able to supervise those children in the classroom. So we would have to employ other staff. So here, we're looking to employ aides or monitors. And in those cases, the teachers will lead the instruction from their homes while our students would either be at home or in school. And those students that would be in school, we have a responsibility and will ensure that those students are properly supervised. In Irvington right now, we have eight teachers that are spread out among different grade levels and different assignments that will be granted these accommodations. We have many other requests that are coming in that are being reviewed. I want to assure the school community that we are going through a thorough process with our legal counsel and our school physician to make sure that every single one of these requests is reviewed and is granted in compliance with law and the individual's medical documentation. We see this as a real growing concern. And if you're following news and there's been articles where other school districts are in a much worse predicament than Irvington is, that this is an area that is the tipping point as to whether schools are able to open or not. If you're able to adequately staff a program, you think about the ability to deliver high-quality instruction without too many obstacles, just from an operational standpoint, this could be a tipping point. I wish there was a way that we could develop some basic formula to be able to identify where that tipping point is for us. But at this point in time, that we have to simply be mindful of where we are. We are focused on, one, maintaining the highest level of staffing we possibly can in our schools while being compliant with law and all the individuals' personal needs. If in cases where a student's schedule may be impacted by a teacher not being present in school, please trust that you will receive communication from your school principal, who will talk to you about the plan and exactly how things will play out in your particular class. And then, as I had mentioned before, PPE continues to be an area where we're constantly seeking to acquire more materials. As I said earlier, we have about 10,000 masks already in hand. Our expectation or our assumption is that students are going to come to school with a couple of their own masks that they'll be able to wear, that our faculty and staff members will do the same. But when we think of those 10,000 masks, those are to be made available for students or staff members who need them, and we will provide them on a as-needed basis. We have rubber gloves in-house for those that need them. We have ample cleaning products in-house. We also have, as I referenced before, face masks on order. We have barriers that are being created and installed throughout the district on a daily basis. But there's, there's more supplies that will be needed throughout the course of the school year, but we are currently in good shape to start the year. So when we think about where we are right now, we continue to put this information up on the district's reopening webpage. You can always email your questions to reopening@irvingtonschools, which again would go to myself, Ms. Stein and Ms. Ellis, or the Board of Education with email address, board@irvingtonschools, which goes to the board and me. We're continuing to update our reopening FAQ that's posted on the district website. Our administrators and that will keep continuing to hold meetings on a as-needed basis to be able to support parent questions. And know that we're constantly inventorying and updating and saving all communications that are going out and posting them on the website for your reference of future needs. Now, student schedules, I should have updated, this says approximately two weeks, student schedules are going out. Do you have those details before you? In most cases, K one, obviously, there'll be more communications that'll be coming forth. So that said, I think we covered a number of important items this evening. Of note should be the K one option, that is a recommendation to move forward. An update on the distance learning option for our parents. And again, about 9% of our students have been enrolled in that. And an adjustment, a very necessary adjustment to the phase into our school year.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. At this point, we'll move on to questions from the trustees. Dave, do you have anything? Yeah, but you got to turn on your mic. Can I bring it a little closer to you?
Do I have to unmute?
No.
Don't unmute.
Nope. Nope. Just bring that closer to you. There you go.
Thank you. So thank you for a very thoughtful presentation and the continued hard work that the administration is doing. It's very appreciated by myself and the board and the community. Before I get into the questions, thoughts, I would like to again thank the teachers of, you know, the IFA and Irvington faculty for their continued real partnership and collaboration with you, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Ellis and so forth. It's really to be commended to try to get this thing moving and off the ground at such a challenging time. So thank you to all of you involved. Questions really regarding, I guess, comment about the, the phase-in changes? Very happy to see that. That's nice. I think that's a good plan. So those are my only thoughts on that. In terms of the K one questions, I have a couple of questions here. One is, what happens if a student does not meet the number of hours of instruction received based on any number of circumstances that could rise up, right? Like you were talking about the X number of hours. That's the first question. I'll just ask this quick one. The second question is the cost. It was $61,000. Just, I want to talk about where that money's going to come from and how it's going to be funded. And if we wanted to go further into two, three, four, and five, which I have some thoughts on in a moment, where's that extra? I'm assuming it's going to be around another $60,000, $70,000, $100,000. So I just want to talk about where the money's coming from. And the, I mean, if you could elaborate on the cleaning in-between sessions too?
Dave, you may want to pause and let Dr. Harrison start answering, otherwise you're going to forget, so.
Start there.
Ms. Stein, if you could please speak to the questions that David posed related to, one, cleaning protocols that would occur midday between the cohorts in the K one model, and then separately, thoughts in and around the, the finances for this opportunity?
Okay. So the cleaning, the cleaning plan right now will be, there's 13 classes that we need to clean in that hour. We will be shifting our custodial staff and using our, our hourly cleaning staff that we've been using this summer to help out. And we will be using them to shift resources and come to Dow's and do that training, the cleaning. We'll be using our sprayer machines. We have, I think, five of them right now. So we'll be using those machines to get that done. We also have handheld sprayers, so we have a plan for this. It will require that the teachers will be out of the room for that at least a half an hour because it takes that long to, you know, it takes, once you do it, it takes about 20 minutes to dry. So that is our plan. The teachers will be going to alternate spaces, including the cafeteria to work. We're not going to be using our cafeteria for student lunch, so we'll be using that for the teachers as an area to go to. So that is the plan. It's going to take some, some effort and some teamwork with our custodial staff. We have been meeting, you know, several times to come up with a, a plan that's going to work for everybody. Second question is cost. Cost is worrisome, of course, in throughout this whole pandemic. We are, you know, encountering costs for supplies, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, we're encountering costs for extra staff. And, and this is an area where I'm going to need some extra staff. We will be trying to shift some of our hours of our custodial crew, so we, we won't incur as much cost as we might. But if we're not successful, we will have to supplement it with hourly workers for this. But I've, I've covered some of that cost in it. I think once, you know, the dust settles and we've got everything going, I'm going to have to do a real good look at the, at all the costs and update you further on where we stand financially for the year. So there is a potential that we have, you know, overspent our, our budgeted funds in some of these areas. And we will have to, you know, think of some things we might either need to cut later or we might need to look at some of our reserves and, and borrow against them as the state now allows us to do. So there's some opportunities that we're going to have to look at. I'm hopeful that we'll have some other opportunities of, of things we're not spending on that we may be able to offset. So I will be looking at all of this diligently, and I really can't answer it fully right now. I think our focus right now is just to get it going, and then we'll, we'll step back and take a look at everything in detail.
And I'd also say this presents an opportunity again for advocacy. I know that our federal representatives here in New York are advocating for some more stimulus funds. Unfortunately, because Congress is not in session at the moment, it's estimated that we would not receive any kind of funding, there wouldn't be action on funding until the end of September into October. So therefore, we certainly have to keep our fingers crossed. We recognize that State Education Department is going to start to make the reductions that we spoke of during our budget process. So I, I want us to stop and think about that for a second because we did take measures in this school district to begin to prepare for that. And some of those measures are going to become necessary. And where they were challenging decisions that I credit trustees for supporting and making, it's going to become a reality. State Ed is looking to actually start, not State Ed, our governor actually, is, is enacting reductions. So there will be adjustments to the year that, financial year that we just closed out because there's monies that are still owed school districts. And then there will be less aid available to us in, in the future. So we need to be mindful of that. And, and I want to remind the community and thank the board really for your perseverance through that difficult budget process when we were facing all these different unknown challenges. And we had the foresight to make some reductions at that time that would not only be able to help us this year, but potentially serve the district well in future years. So it's a reminder right now of why we, we took those steps. So we have to keep our fingers crossed that there's additional, you know, monies that are going to come our way from the federal government. are going to come our way from the federal government. But if they don't, it is our responsibility as your administration to ensure that we have a balanced budget. We are never going to run into the red, and we're not going to risk two things. We're not going to risk the health and safety of our students, and we're not going to sacrifice the quality of their education. So when we think about any adjustments that have to be made down the road, we are not going to trim any edges that have to do with health and safety measures in our school district, and we will do everything in our power to ensure that we preserve the quality education that our community invests in by living in Irvington and that which our students certainly deserve. David, you also had a question related to essentially seat time and thinking about the model that's been introduced for K1. I would ask Mary to maybe chime in because we've yet to hear her voice this evening. So Ms. Ellis?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So David, if I understand your question.
We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Just wait a minute.
Okay.
I can hear you, Mary.
I can try again. I started to hear. Can you hear me now?
Mary, I think we can all hear you on Zoom, but not necessarily in the CPR.
Oh, dear.
I think it's not you. I think it's the CPR. So for anyone who's listening on Zoom, we can hear anyone else who's on Zoom as well, but the interaction between the folks who are in the room, the meeting room, are not necessarily hearing this.
Thank you. I'm going to text Chris and let him know.
So I'm being told that individuals watching from Zoom can hear. We're just having trouble here in the CPR hearing. So that said, Mary, I'm going to ask you to respond to that question, and everyone in the room, make sure the volume is down on your devices, and I'll be the only one that turns mine up.
Can you hear me now, Chris? All right. I feel like I'm doing a cell phone commercial. So David, if I understand your question correctly, and I know that you're well aware of the requirements regarding number of days and number of instructional hours within a day, do I understand your question to be how will we respond if we feel students are not meeting those hours?
It's, is this better?
Perfect.
Okay. It's, what happens if they don't meet those number of hours based on any number of circumstances? A, the question is also sort of in terms of instructional organization, you know, how does it work? Like ELA math, math, ELA social studies, science, like what happens in the morning and in the afternoon? Like I just, like the instructional component of it, I just would love a little clarity on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So each building has developed its own schedule with an outline of what subject areas are taught during what periods. We all know that in an elementary school, those blocks of time can tend to be a little more fluid than happens in a structured period, nine-period day, like we have at the middle school and high school. We are assured that teachers will be planning for a full instruction, full day of learning for five days a week for every student. Some of that time will happen onsite, some of that time may happen virtually, some of that time will happen with students completing assignments and engaging with content independently, and we'll meet our hours that way. As we do in any other situation, and we certainly came across this in the spring with students who were having difficulty engaging in an online earning and learning environment, teachers are holding students accountable. They're reaching out when students are not handing in assignments. If they don't have luck with the student, they're going to reach out to the family. They will bring support services in if they need to, to reach out and make sure that students are engaged in learning for the amount of time that we expect them to and that they're moving forward towards our learning goals.
Thank you, Mary. And I guess I have one final question, which is, so this is moving forward because of a large number of recipients of the survey, right, in the K1 community, there's a large percentage that this was in favor of this. What was the number again? It was like 75% or something? It was like 75%, right?
Yes, we had 75% of the, over 75% of the parents that responded were in favor of this model.
So the inevitable question is what happens to the 25%? So, you know, this, this, you know, in all the communication that we've received and discussed through this, you know, a lot of the reasoning behind this is consistency, also family work schedules and, you know, being able to sort of meet a lot of the different needs at once. There are 25% of folks that this doesn't meet their needs. What happens to them, especially as we think forward into a second, third, fourth, fifth grade? I know I have my own personal opinion there, and I just wonder like sort of, you know, what happens to the people who this doesn't work for?
Well, I would say that the fact that we are seeing, we had a number of folks that the hybrid model didn't work for. People that wanted their children in school five days a week, all day long, despite the challenges that we knowingly face with the ability to provide the necessary social distancing and cleaning in our school during that period of time. The fact that 75% of the respondents supported this probably, you know, we still recognize there's going to be challenges, but overwhelmingly, there was a larger number of folks that chose this over the other model that would be working for them. I recognize that, that this will be challenging for anyone, and to try to support families, I am currently collaborating with the JCC and the Irvington Recreation Department to see if they can provide some support services for those families that may have difficulties because of work obligations, to be able to be home with their younger children, to be able to properly supervise them because they have to head off to their jobs. Here, we're looking to roll out a program that may take a few weeks to launch, but a program that would provide affordable, safe supervision and a program that would be compliant with all the necessary Department of Health standards and requirements. I have met with the JCC and the Irvington Rec Department, who have been incredible partners, who are very eager to take on this challenge because they see it as a need in our school community. So it's going to take a little time to get that up and running, but I'm optimistic that such an experience will materialize. And again, the objective is that it will be one that is relatively affordable, understanding that no one wants the added cost, but trying to do so as affordably as we possibly can for school families. And I believe Mary may want to add to that. Mary, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. David, I just want to say that the primary impetus, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay. The primary impetus for this was to ensure that we were providing our youngest learners with developmentally appropriate ways to learn. We heard last spring from teachers, from parents, that learning through technology for a five, six-year-old is very, very challenging, and we felt strongly that we wanted to look at how we could do that. I will say that in the Curriculum Instruction Reopening Subcommittee, this was an option that we discussed in our very first meeting, and at that time, we didn't pursue it because of the financial implications. We felt that that was not a path we could go down. As we heard more and more from the community and from our teachers who know the children and know the instruction, we realized we needed to go back and look again, which is what we did. We asked the community, do you want us to go back and look at this? And resoundingly, they said yes. We asked teachers. They wanted us to look at, look at it. So the primary reason is instruction.
Okay, and thank you. And then I just wanted to note, though, that, you know, at the, thank you. You know, again, just speaking on behalf of the 25%, in this case, there's not a choice, right? Like if I'm the hybrid model, I'm there two days and I'm remote two days. If I want the, you know, if I wanted to opt into 100% remote, I could opt into 100% remote. So there were some choices there. This is flat out, you have no choice, and I just want to make sure that those folks also have a voice based on the outpouring and stuff, stuff. And as we, but more importantly, to think about, as you mentioned, Mary, the developmental needs as they get older, in fourth and fifth grade in particular, you know, there are different developmental needs there in terms of X number of hours. So I just want us to think of this in terms of scale and cost. Thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you. Yeah, David, I do just want to add something because I think I got a little lost in there that, you know, the impetus, my understanding for the K1 really also came from the building leaders and the teachers who felt that that was the best model for that group of students and that initially, when an AMPM was discussed, I think it was looked at more broadly across the entire school or even the entire district, and that's where I think initially it met with resistance due to the cost. But then, as the process has evolved and there were further discussions, in particular with the community input that the K1 parents were interested in it, we were able to then pivot to look at it in a more targeted basis where the teachers were really united, my understanding is unanimously around a model which would provide that AMPM for the youngest cohort.
Yeah. So, and I would just add to that, I think what Brian, you said is accurate, but what I would add is that as we begin to look at the two through five option, we're going to look, review internally before we go out and survey families because we want to be able to see what the challenges we may have internally. Honestly, there's real concerns about the cost associated with it, and even if we could find the money to be able to provide the necessary staffing for the supervision that we need midday that we had already referenced, so that group would need to be increased, and then the cleaning needs would be magnified significantly. So we would have to work through those, some of those details. But I want to be real transparent to the Board and to the community. Right now, our focus is reopening school and the model that I presented tonight, and that is going to require a significant amount of time and energy. And right now, we are committing to that look at the two through five, but we're not going to be diving in deep right now. Our focus needs to be 100% on opening school under the plan I presented tonight.
Just to clarify what you just said, the two through five piece is just something you're thinking about now that'll come forward later.
Yes, we will investigate that, but right now, we don't have the capacity to be able to look at that immediately.
Understood. Thanks for all your hard work on behalf of all the folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
For my mic to turn green. Oh, there we go. Okay. So I was looking at the slide of remote enrollment, and we're looking at the discussion of the overall percentage of 8.8%, but just looking at that slide, it looks like grades seven, eight, and nine are at 20%? Or is it that 20 students per grade? I'm just trying to understand the data.
That is, that is the number of students. It's not percentage. So the number up the left is number of students, not percentage of students.
So is there a notable higher percentage of seventh through ninth graders choosing remote compared to other grades?
Yeah, we see in some cases exponentially higher. I can't speak to the particular rationale for that, with the exception of the fact that when we think about distance learning, the age of students that I think are, would have the greatest capacity to succeed in that model is going to be our older students, and we know that some people thrive in that environment. So not only may this be a family choice related to healthcare concerns or health needs, but it also may be a preferred model for some particular children that thrive in that particular mode of instruction. So it's hard to be able to, without going back and surveying those individual families, to look at, you know, as you highlighted, seven through nine is a particular larger increase than we've seen in, you know, than all the other grades, you know.
I was just going to add that.
Interesting investigation down the road.
Well, that does parallel the grades that experienced the one-to-one initiative in the middle school.
It certainly does.
Their experience of remote learning may have been different, so I wanted to raise that.
That's, I want to reiterate what I interpreted your point to mean, and then I think that it's an interesting observation at this point. I don't know, we want to say it's a data point, but an observation. So to look at the students, seventh, eighth, ninth grade for the 2021 school year, those are students that were all in the one-to-one Chromebook initiative for the entire last year. So kids that were, had a lot more learning that was tech-based, more experienced with Google Classroom and Google Meet, coincidentally, has the highest number of requests for 100% distance learning.
I just think it's an important data point because we know historically, I don't always look at expansion of those items, but I just wanted to point that out because it is something to keep in our minds moving forward. Going back to Dow's Lane, I'm just trying to understand the, is it a safety and health reason that we maintain a flex day on Wednesdays for K through one? Because at this point, two through three is on an AABBF? Or is it for purposes of allowing the staff to do their development work on the Wednesdays? Or is it a combination?
I would say it's a combination of things. It provides that opportunity for that 100% distance learning so that there is all, you know, class-wide engagement where all the students are involved. But we also have to think of the level of equity among our staff that we want to, we have to establish common learn, work responsibilities for everybody. So we're having that level of continuity there. It does provide for that afternoon experience where we've committed to our staff to be able to provide that opportunity for collaboration, planning, and professional development that is, that is much needed. And also, you know, there's certainly cleaning objectives that sit on that Wednesday that we don't want to forget. But I think it's, pardon the pun here, I think it's a real hybrid of reasons, but it remains necessary.
That's very interesting. And just, I know that David has explored this a little bit, but in terms of exploring the two through five model, is it from the school district's perspective, one that is looked at, two to three as part of Dow's separately from four to five because there would be different developmental and building requirements?
Yeah, I think we're going to, we will look at it through, the commitment is to look at it for that range of grades, but I think we are going to look at it separately in chunks of looking at two, three, and three, four separately to respect the, not only the difference in the program, the operational needs that are present in each of the schools, and, you know, the different opinions that are going to come in from parents and students. I think that we're also going to find that there's very different takeaways from the quality of learning experience that one may see from a fifth grader than a, than a first grader in the distance learning model and the scope of what can happen instructionally or the level of work that can happen through the span of a curriculum in that hybrid model at a fifth grade versus what first grade would happen where student working independently may be able to progress quite well in that hybrid approach.
So similarly to what we discussed happened with Dow's Lane, faculty input will continue to be very important and all of that.
100%. Yeah, the feedback of our faculty is critical in this process, and just like when we looked at the K1, we did not make this adjustment and move simply because we were looking at the feedback from parents. Feedback from parents was important, or we wouldn't have surveyed them, but we had to have had the dialogue with all our teachers. And Dr. Kanter and Miss Greenspan had that level of communication with our K1 faculty, and they were enthused with that opportunity. We haven't had that full-on conversation with all of our faculty, two, two through five as of yet. It's happening, but we need to get their feedback and their thinking as well as Ms. Chatnicks and other staff, and then look at the logistics and the effects on the budget, and then if viable, then we will come to the school community.
I did want to ask, when we talk about the shortages in technology K through 12, is there any thought of surveying, I don't know how you would do it, the students perhaps to look at if there are certain grades that are better able to handle using their personal devices, at least on a temporary basis, perhaps in the, in the high school where I think there is a personal device policy?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're actually in the process of modifying our, a whole new survey that'll go to families within the next few days to the next week that will specifically do that, once we have a little bit more information. that, once we have a little bit more information on the arrival date of our devices. However, we're exactly looking at that, looking for a first phase of who wants a device and who needs a device versus those who would be comfortable using their own to start the school year.
Okay, so with 650, I'm just doing ballpark, does that cover basically four grades of high school? I don't know.
Yes, 650 would be more than the high school. We have about 540 in the high school.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I'm very excited about the app, which I'm hoping that our parents will have a chance to practice because I know we talked about communicating with parents about their health and safety responsibilities that they share with the district. I'm wondering, are there any plans in addition for sort of check-ins during the school day in addition to what might be brought in on the app, you know, which, which is before anyone comes to school? So they affirm certain things about temperature, traveling and all of that? Or is that something we'll have to explore, I guess, as we begin to roll out in person?
Yeah, our first initiative in, you know, following the recommendations of Department Health and State Education Department is to do the, complete the pre-screening, that there will be follow-ups, of course, as warranted, based upon knowledge that we have in school or families inconsistency in completing the survey that would require staff intervention upon arrival at school. But where necessary, I see this as a great opportunity where our counseling staff, our social workers are really going to have a tremendous influence in supporting families.
Well, thank you very much. It's a very, there are many variables that I see that we've addressed so many more of them tonight, but I'd like to cede the floor to the next trustee.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll stick with the room and then we'll go to the trustees remotely. So Maura, you're up.
Thank you. So my questions are also related to, I guess, well, one, a couple are related to general resources that you referred to, Dr. Harrison. So seats for supervision of children with two working parents. And I ask this just because I know that you are, well, you mentioned it in earlier, and I think you probably have the greatest view into the availability of these seats. Initially, I had understood that there were two options in the district or there were two options expected, which was the ICC or the Irvington Children's Center and the JCC. But now I'm understanding that it's the REC Center and the JCC?
Yeah, the, the exploration that I've had from the beginning has been with the JCC and the REC Center. Some has suggested reaching out to some other partners, but based upon the level of interest and the work involved, we've extended it to the partnership with JCC because they have the capacity and the facilities to be able to support more students. Currently, the JCC is equipped to run programs for over 100 students and that is their expertise and looks and feels a little bit different than, and no offense to some of the other wonderful childcare programs, but they run educational programs. They have staffing that's equipped to be able to support students with the integration of technology. They have Wi-Fi infrastructure, they have contemporary bathrooms where they can be able to maintain the necessary cleaning and sanitization protocols. And they are preparing to run programs with all the Department of Health safeguards in place that are comparable to what's happening in schools. So they have really the, the capacity to jump in and do this and they have the staff that's there eager and willing. So it's, I've had two phone calls with them already and they are actually putting together a plan right now for it. They are connecting and maybe working in collaboration with the Department of Recreation. If the Department of Recreation doesn't run their own unique program, maybe there's a partnership where they actually branch out and utilize some Irvington Village resources, physical resources, and expand their program if capacity is needed.
And how do we know if capacity is needed? If it's not available, how will families know to access?
It's very unscientific right now, other than the need that, that we know that's there from communication that I've had with parents, word that I've heard from PTSA Ed Foundation, other organizations. But it's a, it's a need that's identified nationally and the Irvington School community is no different. So once the programs are up and able to run, we are going to promote that for them with direct communications to our school community.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're very welcome.
The district will be communicating on that when it's up and running. Next question was about something that you said about how a student's schedule would be impacted depending on the availability of the teacher. And I, I just wanted to understand the scenario that you might be referring to. I know it's probably not one that we all want to think about, but it's one that will happen.
So-
Thank you.
So when I think of, I identified eight teachers before. And right now, among that group of eight teachers, there are no elementary classroom teachers. So that's, that's a key point. And I'm not saying that it's going to remain that way, but that's what our current data is. We have a number of other requests that are being considered. We have another, number of folks who are going to receive additional PPE to be able to support what their particular needs are, but we anticipate that there will be more requests either for accommodations to teach from home or even potentially leaves of absence during this period of time. So if it's a leave of absence, we will seek to hire a leave replacement teacher, someone to come in to be able to support that role. We have posted for additional building substitute teachers, which are folks that we commit to working on a daily basis. They have eligibility for health insurance, so it's a higher level employee that we'd be bringing in. So we've already advertised for those positions. We've also advertised for aides and monitors. And so if we have a scenario, so now if we think about those eight individuals, the bulk of them are at the secondary level. And where we have them, in that case, you think a child going throughout their school day. And I have, you know, seven classes during my school day, I may have six of my teachers that are going to be that, that hybrid that works, that we're speaking of. So I'll walk into the classroom, I'm going to have a teacher there and the other half of my, my class, the other cohort is at home learning on that day, right? But then I may happen into one of those classes where that teacher is teaching from home. So in that case, there will be another district employee that will be in the room as a facilitator of the learning, that will be to supervise the learning, but the instruction will be delivered by the teacher that is home and will be delivered by way of Google Meet. And so when you think of that in those scenarios, it really is going to play out like 100% distance learning for that particular class, because that teacher is going to be live, engaged the entire period with the students that are in school and with the students that are at home. So it becomes a truly interactive experience for everybody involved. We're hoping that we're not seeing much, much more of this, but I have to be honest with you, this needs to be a real concern for everybody. Again, I wish that we had an algorithm that we could identify that, that's our tipping point, but I'm hearing stories of larger school districts that have 40, 50 teachers that are in this position and it's really resulting in a place where schools may not be able to reopen in person because of the constraints on staffing. We are not there, but no, I've been very transparent and communicative with our school community. If we start to have that level of concern, I am going to alert everybody. Right now, we think what's before us is manageable. It's going to be tough in the next two weeks to get that supplemental staff to supervise. It's going to be costly to do so, but we're in the process of doing it.
And thank you for, for clarifying. Could, could I also ask, I mean, generally, we, the school district always finds subs when needed. And I know that earlier in the year, we, as the board approved an increase in the rate of payment and clearly that's going to be needed. So I guess I, I'll just finish by asking if, huh, no, I'm having, I'm having trouble phrasing it right.
Maybe-
Is there a possibility that we, there's more likely a possibility that we recruit building-level subs and have excess capacity and spend a little more rather than depending on day subs if demand is, is getting too tight? Is that, is that how we would solve it or?
We do use building subs and we do have some budgeted for each building. The issue there is that there is a cost of the benefits that would be associated with that, which might be a tipping point for us. So it's something I'm continuing looking at. I will say that we have posted for monitors, sub-aides, substitutes, and we are getting good responses right now. So we will be screening all those, those applicants and be placing them where we have the position. So I do feel right now it's manageable, but if, if that is something we think we need to do, we will come back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein.
Yeah, and I'd also say one thing that we are doing, Lisa Tortora, who's our personnel assistant, is going to be surveying our current pool of, or our base of substitute teachers to survey their availability and desire to work right now. So as you can imagine, there's folks that do this as a supplemental income, some that do it just because they love working with kids, but some that may choose not to work at this time. So we want to make sure we have a good read on that, that pool of candidates to make sure that we have some there. And as Carol said, we, we keep advertising and we're advertising through atypical sources for school districts. So we're hopeful that we'll have enough folks, but you know, it's another question mark for us. But again, we're trying to stay in front of it by, by surveying them, advertising, hiring more, and in some cases, looking to add a few building subs to, to speak directly to that, that point that you raised.
Thank you. I, I yield to Ms. Whistler.
Go ahead, Jane.
I just want to thank everyone for the hard work that they're doing, again, the entire staff. I think, well, I just want to say that the substitute situation is the subs would be more exposed than a regular teacher because they would be with different cohorts depending on, I'm just assuming that would be the case, so it would be hard to get subs at this time. My question is for grades two through five. Could you explain a little bit what the cohort that is at home in the hybrid, hybrid, what are they going to be doing? Like, will they be seeing taped lessons? Or if you have a remote teacher at home, could that remote teacher support those students on the day that they're remote? I'm, I'm a little bit confused about the remote days.
Sure, so I am going to see if we can hear Mary now because I can see she's ready to speak, so give it a shot, Mary.
Okay, thank you. Jane, thank you for the question. As I think we all know, this is going to be a new model for all of us. We have, we have plans for how we think it's going to work. Part of opening our year is going to be to see exactly how those plans pan out. I will tell you that in any session, a teacher will be checking in with students at the beginning of the lesson to establish the learning goals for the day. They will be checking in with students at the end of the session to see how they did with the work that they were assigned. Like happens in a classroom in what we, a pre-pandemic normal school, it could vary every day about what is happening during that time. It could be that a student who's learning remotely is assigned some independent work. It could be that they're watching a video that would give them direct instruction on the topic that the children in class are working on that day. It could be that they have an opportunity to continue some practice and application of learning that had happened before. I will tell you that I think our teaching staff is, our faculty is, they're, they're amazing. They're, they're experts in their content area, they're experts in pedagogy, and they are going to take every single tool that they have in their toolbox to make this work for kids. They will design instruction that will work for everybody. Will there be bumps along the road and glitches as we learn how to do it? I can tell you there will be because it's new for everybody. But we'll, we'll pay attention to what we're doing, how the kids learn, how it works. We'll adjust as we go along and I have every confidence that our teachers will design very meaningful learning for all of the students.
Thank you, that's it.
Perfect. Michael, you're up.
All right, testing, testing. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, great. So yeah, I would like to say thank you to everyone who's been involved in this process, particularly to Dr. Harrison and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Ellis and Ms. Stein, but you know, the committees and also, you know, our faculty and families. I think there's a really healthy dialogue that's occurring that, you know, this stakeholder process is, is getting us on the right trajectory. And, you know, I'm really happy with a lot of the, the, sort of the evolution of what's occurred. I, I definitely support the, the easing in with the longer phase in, I think, for all the reasons that were cited. Chris, if you don't mind, if you could just give us a quick, under the hood of what I see as sort of a warp speed reaction or transition or pivoting that the district has been able to do, having been on the board now my sixth year, things take a long time in education, but I'm seeing, you know, the district change in relationship to adding that week of distance learning or adding in the K one. But it takes you helping bring the whole community along. We've seen that that works so well in other districts. So I mean, could you just sort of walk through, you know, has it, how do you pivot the district in 10 days? Or Mary, if you want to just mention, because I think it's important for, for folks to understand that, because sometimes we see, you mentioned, maybe we'll do K one, or we'll see a letter from, from the, you know, that's shared countywide by our school unions, but then, you know, there's a change eight or 10 days later. How do you go through that process?
Great, well, thank you, Michael. Certainly not an easy one. I could tell you one thing is that there hasn't been a summer vacation here in Irvington and that we are working around the clock. But truly, this really speaks to a process where there's been tremendous collaboration, open dialogue with our outstanding faculty association, administrative association, and remaining focused on what is right for our kids. So I could bring this all the way back to thinking about our theories of action, our strategic plan, our guiding, you know, our guiding principles here for the school district in that we are dedicated to doing the right thing. And I think we're in a place now where for us to be successful and to meet the needs of our students, we have to, one, be flexible and, two, we have to be innovative. And we have to understand that we're going to take some risks. As Mary indicated, there's going to be bumps along the road, some that happen internally within our systems and our processes, and some that happen well beyond that if there was to be an outbreak that closed schools and changed things on us. There's articles out there right now talking about essentially like a global internet crash come middle of September, beginning of October, soon as we get all, you know, students that, in that midday window, when all students in the country are hitting the internet at once for distance learning, is the internet going to go down? And I don't know if that's a Y2K scenario or if that's a reality for us. But frankly, we have worked tirelessly. We have not been focused on politics. We've been focused, everybody has been focused on what is right for kids. We have had a process that I think has been very, very transparent, one where we have listened to feedback of our faculty, staff, and parent community and truly valued and allowed that feedback to inform our thinking. And when it became clear that there was opportunities, we made adjustments. And at the beginning of this process, and I can remember some of the first presentations that I led, discussions that we had at a district level, we truly spoke to the idea and the need to be flexible and to recognize that our plans were going to shift and change. So, you know, certainly it's a process that I've led, but the credit for the success and the innovation is something that is shared among all the faculty and staff and administration here in Irvington. And, and I thank the parent community for the continued feedback and really- the continued feedback and really the support. And I've said to a number of people along the way, the number of positive emails that we have received and what are hundreds a day, that they really at times are the wind behind our sails. They keep us motivated and remind us why we're doing that, which we do every day.
Well, thank you. I think it's an important way in which to guide the process to, and, you know, the good news, bad news is I hope it continues, which means I don't think we'll get much of a let off in the near future, you know, going into September in particular. So I hope this level of, you know, communication and, and collaboration with our whole school community continues in the way that it's been occurring. And with success now, you know, we start to, you know, as David's talking about, you know, those large numbers that have been able to have adjustments that work for their families. And I think we need to dig in for smaller cohorts or groups that, you know, I think you've shown as a district flexibility with. So could you just speak a little bit more? And a lot of projects is, I wasn't able to listen to all of the presentation. I'm actually on a little break from work as I ask these couple of questions. The students with one-to-one aids, maybe this is a question for Mary, how are they being supported in their distance or asynchronous learning? And, you know, will that continue to be reviewed for possible adjustments as needed?
Sure. So thank you, Michael. As you're aware, if through an IEP or 504, a student has one-to-one aid, we have an obligation to continue to provide that service regardless of whether we're onsite or not. And students have one-to-one aids for a wide variety of reasons. So there isn't one answer to your question in terms of how they're utilized. It's a matter of our PPS department, along with the classroom teacher and the special education teacher, if there is one involved, considering the child's needs, what the one-to-one aid is supposed to be accomplishing for that child in order to make learning accessible to them. And they're making sure that they devise a system by which that can happen virtually. So they're, they're looking at all of them as individuals to be sure that the students' needs are met and the spirit in which the one-on-one, one-to-one was assigned to that student is maintained.
Great. So it's really working with each student. Do you have, I don't know, you mean have the actual number, but a back-of-the-hand number, a back-of-the-napkin number of how many students receive, have that one-to-one aid service? Are we talking?
I don't know. I can find out for you.
That'd be great. I'm curious just to how many students need that, that level of personal attention in terms of making sure that that support is, is being given. To Carol, you know, in terms of the spending, you know, we, I think, I just want to make sure I'm in the ballpark with how I think this, or frame this in terms of, for our budget, we made cuts that were up to about, I believe it was around a billion dollars. That's what's cut from the budget, but, but cuts from programs or, or aspects of spending, because we anticipate a 20% state aid cut if, if we don't get relief from the federal government. But on top of that, you know, we've been discussing these new costs. And, you know, are we in the ballpark of, I know you talked about there may be offsets or ways we can get re, you know, reimbursed at a future point. But at this point, are we sort of crossing towards a half million dollars in cost related to these changes in reopening?
Definitely we are. It is, again, I'm not really sure where our overall position's going to land, but definitely we're approaching that, about that number.
Okay, thank you. So clearly, it's important what the federal government does in the next few, few weeks, and hopefully the state to help ensure that those cuts don't just hurt us, but other school districts around us.
Michael, some of the, some of the money is being reallocated though from within the budget. So I think we have to keep that in mind. So, you know, I think at a future meeting, we'll be giving you more information on the whole budgetary aspects of this.
Yeah. But the key is it's, it's pretty significant, what, you know, what we're doing here. And that, and it's on top of what are likely to be these, these cuts that we've been anticipating. And just finally, with, following up with where more was asking in relationship to, you know, again, we're taking school out of the building for part of the week or for some families, all, our whole week, and putting it in their, their homes or other locations where their students are able to be. And I, I hope that we can continue to figure out and identify what that need is. It's, it's a difficult number, but I think we have some of the information in-house in terms of number of siblings in the household, number of students on a free reduced lunch. But I think, you know, I hope you, here, there's a new survey coming out. You might think about some carefully framed questions in terms of perhaps identifying if all or some parents or caregivers work full-time, and other questions related to that that might help identify the need or challenge. You know, I know Ardsley had similar types of questions, and I think that gives you sense that it's not just five or 10%, but it could be 25 or 30% number of people that, that we, you know, the range that we identify helps inform the, the effort that you are currently making and may need to continue to make to support those families. That's, I, could you consider that?
Thank you. I would also, I'd also add that, just Michael, to come back, that when we think of one-to-one aids per IEP, I do know that we have a number, it speaks into it's 19.5, one-to-one aids across the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Erin, you're up.
Thank you. And I'll also echo everyone's appreciation for all the hard work that's being done. I know this is hours and hours and hours of work with little sleep. And I think just the attitude of you and Mary and Chris and Carol, it's amazing. I'm surprised you're not all sleeping right now, but it's, it's commendable. And then also, I know the principals, like everyone really, anyone I've interfaced with really has their heart in this. And I just think that's what makes our district special, is that we really are looking out for the kids and what's best for them. And that's what makes us unique. And I'm really tired too, so I don't want to get teary-eyed. Um, but I do want to say thank you. So, and I mean that. Um, I, Jane's question sparked a question for me, because I think, I didn't realize I was confused about the cohorts and what remote learning looks like for, like when cohort A is home, learning remotely, or B and vice versa. I thought that there were cameras in the classroom and that the kids would also be able to participate virtually in those classrooms. Is that not the case? Or is it that that's one of the myriad of options that would be available in addition to videos and things like that?
It's, it's the latter of what you said, Erin, that yes, that will be an option that's available.
Okay, thank you. And then it also just sparked a question, and since it's an option, it may be a question, but initially, when K and one was also on that same cohort schedule, I think it was easier to visualize what a full remote student would look like in that scenario, since students would be remote for days at a time. Since we're going to the half-day model and that changes that experience, what does, and if you're not prepared totally to answer this, I understand, what does the fully remote option look like for a K and one student now with the half-day model? Is it, are they still just remoting into the classrooms in the morning? Or they have, okay, awesome.
Yeah, it would, it would be a similar experience, Erin, in that the students would have the same options of the live streaming. There would be Google meets with the, the class, with the teacher during the course of the school day. But like the students that would be attending four days in school for those half-days, they would have asynchronous work that they would have to complete as well.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I do just want to acknowledge, I think our families that have selected remote learning, like, it's not viewed as a choice that they've selected remote learning. I think they feel that they need to in light of keeping the health and safety of their family is sort of the number one priority. I don't think anyone really wants to do remote learning, but I think that it's viewed as a necessity. So I'm glad that we're offering that option. I just wanted to say that as well. And I, this is one other question that we've talked about, but I'm going to just throw it out there again. For, maybe not, so I don't know if this works in a half-day model, but is it possible for the kids in the, that are doing hybrid, can the specials be on those remote days for those kids where you could combine your cohort As and do art remotely and music remotely and then, you know, and then switch so that the core academics is done in person, where the kids may need more of that physical contact with their teacher, which sounds weird, but their in-person contact with their teacher?
Yeah, that's a question that's come up before. And I absolutely understand the spirit behind it. I want to say that I very, very firmly believe that a child needs a complete and well-rounded education that includes all of our specials. Yes, academics are at the core of what we do, but we're also helping to form whole human beings who have many ways in which they interact with the world, with each other, and understand themselves. And the arts, physical education, all, all of our specials are part of being human.
No, that's, that's the right answer. Thanks for reminding me of that, Mary.
You're welcome.
I appreciate. I don't have any other questions. I know this has been going on. I'm sure a lot of people that are in the community are going to want to ask questions, so I will defer to them. Ryan?
Thank you. I just have one question, Dr. Harrison, if you want to. Just to clarify, yeah, on the costs related, we have our K1 cost of about $60,000. And I just want to clarify that I'm correct, that it probably wouldn't be 60 if the recommendation was to expand it to two, three, because there'd probably be additional costs related to cleaning. And also, since there aren't aides already in those classrooms with the need for even additional personnel. So just to, so the public is seeing that 60,000 number for K1, it probably would not be 60 for two, three. It'd probably be something greater than that, just so people are, you know, clear, you know, where we're starting from in terms of a cost.
It would be exponentially greater in, in looking at the needs, because there's simply just more spaces in the school that would have to, and I say touched, right, by our, by our cleaners, because there's more spaces that are being touched. Our transportation is going to increase because we have to add more buses, because we'd be looking at the capacity of buses as well. So all those numbers are going to increase exponentially.
Thank you. Now, that was just the point I wanted to clarify. So with that, I suggest we move on to our consent agenda. And if there are any questions on tonight's consent agenda.
I did have two, a couple of questions. This is Michael. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm getting everything. I'm pressing buttons as we speak. I'm muting my Zoom. Okay, how's this? Good? Okay. Just one question. Which one is the policy?
I'll speak to that, actually.
You want to speak to it?
Yeah.
Perfect. So. And I don't have any further questions?
Yeah, no, so I'm.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, two pieces. I, I think we might have the answer I was, I was looking for, but I think I need more detail. So I don't know if I should pull the item that I'd mentioned, I'd like to pull, or whether I can get the answer and then decide whether we need to, whether I'd like to pull it or not. I don't know what the.
Michael, you're being a little cryptic. I think, are you talking about the teacher mentor?
Yes, I'm talking about the teacher mentor.
So I don't know if you had a chance to look at the information that I had sent, and if you had particular follow-up around that.
But if, if I can ask the question first, then, then that's great.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I had concerns around the, the mentor program in that when we spoke about it last year, it's, it's stifended, as we're proving here. And at the time, when it was discussed last year, there was, it was explained to us that there was no sort of written overview or protocols or goal, goals around the work. But I saw an answer, just as we're coming into this meeting, that leads me to suggest, to think that there may be more organization to this process than we were understanding last year. So I don't know if you have, I was wondering if you could explain how it works and to what degree it's not just an informal chance for a mentor teacher to, informally, without any guidance or goals, to work with a mentee? I mean, to what degree is this an organized process?
So, Michael, there is a formal written mentoring plan. It is part of our professional development plan that is submitted to New York State every year. I hold a meeting at the beginning of the year with the new teachers and the mentors to go over the purpose of the mentoring program, which is, which we are required to do by New York State Education Department. The, both the mentors and the mentees submit a written log to me monthly with the topics that they discover and the amount of time that they have spent on those topics. So I review those. And so it's a process that is very, very well-defined and closely monitored.
And I would say, Michael, in addition to that, we do hold regular mentor-mentee meetings throughout the course of the school year. So there is a formal plan that is in place. I'm thinking that maybe the, the challenge that you're referencing was maybe a particular response to some questions you received from an individual last year on the subject. But what Mary has just iterated is not new. As long as I've been your superintendent, we've had a mentor plan in place and a relatively thorough, extensive mentor process. And our mentors have done fabulous work in collaborating with our new faculty members during the eight-plus years that I've had the pleasure of being here. So I'm thinking that there were some challenges historically in communicating around the topic. And that's why I sat back and let Mary, who's been with us for eight months, give that real concise answer. And then I expanded upon it only because there's a few extra steps and layers that we have in place in Irvington that you don't see all the, in all districts.
And, and, you know, it's, it's conceptually, and now in terms of the detail, something that, that I support very much. But based on the response we had last year, it wasn't, there were some concerns raised. So I feel like they were addressed in that response. So thank you. And then just two pieces that are related to consent agenda. The other is around the code of conduct and the Metropolitan Center contract. I'm so glad that, that we're able to vote on both of these tonight, because I don't, as we've talked about over the course of the last year, we've talked about revising the code of conduct. And I so appreciative of your commitment, Dr. Harrison, and the school community, you know, in supporting this work around equity, and that that will include looking at the code of conduct. So that was very important for me to be able to support our approval of the code of conduct. And I'm glad that you've been able to achieve this, this point where we are going to make that commitment to equity with that work that we're doing. And just one last question I have is that we're not approving a new high school guidance counselor tonight. We had one that has left over the summer. As we've been hearing all night, there is a real, you know, unprecedented level of work in terms of the schedule work for our secondary students or high school students. On top of that, the beginning of the year is working with seniors as it relates to our college application process. Do, do, have we checked in with, I'm sure you have, but, you know, how are we doing to, to address this issue? Because I definitely want to make sure we're not letting any of our students slip through the cracks with this, this challenge upon, on top of all the other challenges we have.
Michael, thank you for the question. I will remind you and all the trustees that we should keep our questions to items that are on the consent agenda and that are on the agenda for this evening. So this is not something that is on the agenda, but I will refer you and the community to the communication that came from the high school last, at the end of last week, where they are actively looking for a new counselor. And I believe the, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but that the goal is to have someone in place by early September. So that was the last communication from the high school principal on that topic, as well as that there'll be additional support provided by the chair of the department in the interim and as that new person comes on board. So I believe that was the, the last communication from the building. And Dr. Harrison, you can step in if there's anything I missed.
No, absolutely. Ms. GM's letter either Thursday or Friday to the high school, school community. She spoke of the ongoing search. I know we're down to our finalists in reference checking right now. So I'll be making an offer of employment, hopefully within the next week. Ms. GM indicated that Ms. Coleman, our guidance chairperson, is going to be stepping in and providing supplemental support during the transition, but then also ongoing support to those students that have had transition. but then also ongoing support to those students that have had transitions in their counselor over the recent years. Certainly unfortunate, nothing that we could have ever foreseen or bargained for. And we're doing the best with a difficult situation, but we are going to make certain that our students that are in that critical year of preparing for high school, as well as those that are in their, you know, preparing for college, but also those that are just entering high school have the level of support and guidance that they need to be successful.
Okay, I continue to be concerned. So I hope that, you know, I've been a big supporter of the guidance department and the work that they do in their capacity. It's just, I don't have a sense from what we're sharing here that we're able to meet that capacity. And I have had, you know, some students who, you know, who, you know, and families for who this is a concern, come forward. So I hope it's something that we really, we meet the need.
Yeah, and as always, if there are families that have questions or concerns related to their child's experience, they should be reaching out to their school principal as well.
And that's what they're encouraged to do if they reach out to me.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just as a quick question, in reading through the code of conduct fairly quickly, I wanted to just ask one question. I do believe, speaking to equity, which sort of sparked what Michael was talking about, this is equity in a different way, but it did speak to equity for both our remote learners and our in-person learners. And I just think that's important for the community to understand, unless I've read it incorrectly, but I think it does speak to, and our remote learners are just as are in-person learners. And the code of conduct does address that. Is that correct?
100%, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other questions on, I think it was on the consent agenda? Go ahead.
Sorry, here I go with the mic again. I just want to confirm that in terms of the policy, we don't normally have our policy committee meeting over the summer. But in fact, every member of the policy member has had this policy available to them, along with all the members of the committee who normally see it.
Yeah.
And that in the current environment, it's very important to get these items looked at.
Yeah, so to maybe back up, Ms. Propper's question was about process and feedback related to the policy revisions. So for community's point of clarification, there is a committee of the Board of Education that is a policy committee. That committee has a number of administrative members that are representative district office staff, our district clerk, Pauline Davies, is on it. And we also have Gail Krieger, who are Special Education Lens, and Mr. Sotile joins us. And we also circulate those policies regularly with our administrative, collective administrative team, recognizing the need to change and modify some policies or introduce new policies as a result of hybrid learning, COVID, so on and so forth. We went through policies, we utilized guidance that was either provided by legal counsel or New York State School Boards Association, made the proposed revisions or introductions of policies. We shared them with the full Board of Education. So the policy committee members of the board would have had opportunity to review and offer feedback. And all members of the district administration were shared copies of the policies and provided feedback as well. Additionally, I've been holding regular district-wide staff meetings, and I shared with the staff that we were making such revisions. And we posted all of them on the website for our public to be able to see. And they've been posted on the website for about a week and a half, two weeks now.
She's going back to my original question. Let me ask it, please, which is very simple. Just understand all of that. At some point, we want to make sure that the public knows to look and read them.
Yes.
That's my only...
Yeah, there's no doubt. So I have the outline that I've created for that upcoming communication that I'm working on has, one of the items there will be new policies, and there'll be a direct hyperlink to them. Understand that when we go from the redline format that you see attached to the agenda today, that which has been posted on the website for the past week and a half, it goes through a process where Ms. Davies then has to work with school boards. It'll take a couple of days for them to get uploaded to the website in final form. But we're just a few days away from that, which will coincide nicely with the release of my next communication on this topic.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to say one other thing. I wanted to add to what Mr. Hannah said, and thank you so much for the contract with NYU, because this code of conduct, which we were going to look at, which does impact many diversity, inclusion, and representation issues, which we've discussed prior, we were going to look at it and was interrupted, actually, by the pandemic. And now with the help of NYU, we're going to be able to revisit it at the end of the year or at the beginning of next academic year with their lens and with the work that the whole district will be doing. I know that Mr. Hannah and I have been very passionate about these issues, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you. And I would just say, I frankly think we'll do a much better job now than we would have had we gone with our original plan and did it back in April, which was what was calendared to happen. But with the expertise and the guidance of NYU and their impartial lens, I think will even take us to a better place than we are today.
Thank you. I should add, because everyone wants to add their two cents, but it's, the entire board is appreciative, looking forward to the work. I don't think it's, particularly trustees, the board as a whole recognizes the need and the value in this work and is supportive of these efforts. So again, thank you, Dr. Harrison. And with that, if we can vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I don't think we...
It's been so long, I don't remember.
So, yes, so moved, so moved second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now's the time for, if you have community questions or comments, to put your name in the Q and A so we can recognize you. Dr. Harrison, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add about the consent agenda before we moved on?
No, as always, I just want to welcome new staff members. Unfortunately, there are some appointments that are unable to make the agenda because of just where we are in the hiring process. But certainly want to extend a warm welcome to Ashley Pandesia, and who is a new middle school special education teacher, and also Virginia Diamond, who is another wonderful school nurse to complement our fabulous team in place. Even before being appointed tonight, I can tell you, both of them participated in our new staff orientation today, because they're so enthused about joining our school district. I want to welcome them to the school community.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So now we have, J, if you could promote Katerina Manoff, 57 Butterwood Lane West, to be able to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, so I have a kindergartner signed up for the distance model 100% remote learning. And I emailed about my concern that the current plan doesn't meet minimum standards. I appreciate Erin bringing up sort of this related issue about what remote learning looks like in K to 1. And I think there's a major issue that wasn't addressed in the response to Erin. When you say that distance learning in K to 1 looks similar to distance learning in grades 2 through 12, because as a 100% distance learning student, grades 2 through 12, you would join half of your classmates who are already learning online on two days, and then you would join the other half of your class on the other two days. And as we heard from Mary, the teachers are going to be working really hard to be designing meaningful learning experiences for the kids at home, because for four days, half of every class is at home. And again, 100% distance learners can benefit from that, can participate in that. In K to 1, there are no Google meets. There is live instruction in the classroom, and there is asynchronous independent work at home. And as Dr. Cantor confirmed to me, my child would be pretty much all alone in a Google meet of one, watching the teacher teach everyone else. All of her classmates would be in the classroom. The teacher, I'm sure, would do her best to check in with Lana, with my daughter occasionally. But obviously, she cannot give more than a sliver of attention to the one kid on the Google meet. She doesn't have the time to design learning experiences just for Lana at the expense of her other 20 kids, and I wouldn't expect her to do that. It looks very different from, you know, having it half and half to have one kid who's sitting there on their computer. I do understand that academically, this model could still allow my daughter to meet the objectives of kindergarten. And, but honestly, that's not my concern. She can already read and do math and all of that. I'm just, I want her to have social interaction, but it sounds like this, this model will have zero social interaction with peers, even online, and that she will feel left out and ostracized, because she is going to be that one kid on the Google meet. You know, maybe there'll be one more. I heard there's 10 kindergartners in our situation. I don't know how they're split across classes, but it's not going to be like grades 2 through 12, where she's one of a half of class, you know, where those kids aren't going to feel left out and aren't going to have this lack of social interaction. And this kind of thing for a five-year-old can have long-term impacts for years. She could, you know, come to hate school because of this. And to me, it seems like the best solution would be grouping her with those other nine kindergartners who chose distance learning. And I understand that comes with its own downsides. It's absolutely an imperfect solution. But surely, it's not as bad as forcing a five-year-old child to sit alone on a Google meet every day, you know, isolated from all of her peers. And, you know, I hate to, I guess, I feel like I'm wasting time with this concern, because I recognize that it's niche, it doesn't apply to most families. But for my family, it's a huge, huge deal. And, you know, in response to my email, Dr. Harrison, you did say you would address this in the presentation. I feel like it hasn't been addressed. I would just really like to hear, you know, is there any commitment from the district to at least provide some, you know, minimum social interaction for my family and those other few families in K through 1 that are going to be doing the 100% distance option?
Thank you.
So I could say right now, I can't tell you exactly how the students that, whose parents have signed them up for 100% distance learning are distributed among the different sections. So you could think that there's, you know, seven sections of kindergarten, which would relate to 14 cohorts, and in turn, saying nine, 10 students. It's quite possible that there could be multiple students that have elected for 100% distance learning that could be in a single cohort. You raise a good question. I think that there's going to not just be opportunity for individual contact with teachers, but the opportunity will exist that teacher will be able to facilitate Google meets with an entire class that would include that student. So if we come back to my comments that I made earlier in the evening in speaking about the technology, the use of earbuds, that there's going to be that opportunity for students to be able to join class discussions through technology, so there could be that level of interaction. I believe Ms. Ellis had some comments she wanted to share related to it as well.
Sure, thank you. I definitely hear your concern and understand the challenge. Please know that. One of the things that we heard from our kindergarten teachers, kindergarten and first-grade teachers, was that the students really struggled with the technology, especially if they were expected to do it independently. That doesn't mean that kindergartners and first graders won't be involved with technology and will never be on Google meets. They will be. There's lots of opportunities for them to interact through that forum, as well as others, that platform, as well as others. I will also tell you that I very firmly believe that every one of our kindergarten teachers is going to be 100% committed to any student that is on their class roster, whether they're in the classroom half the day or whether they're at home. And I would, I know you've spoken to Dr. Cantor, and I'm sure once you have your kindergarten teacher assignment, that you can work with that teacher to talk about how you can best meet the needs that your daughter, I believe you said, that your child has, because we are committed to making sure that every student, whether they're in the classroom part-time or not in the classroom at all, gets a well-rounded education. And as I said before, in reference to specials, that we know that we have a whole child there, and we want to be sure that we meet all of their needs.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eugenia Spector, 32 Richmond Hill. And again, reminder that comments or questions should be kept to three minutes, please. So Ms. Spector?
Hi, I promise I will keep my comments very, very brief. So first and foremost, I just want to say I am so grateful. I feel like the district took the feedback that was important to me and my family and many others. I feel like you internalized it, you understood where we're coming from, and you really came up with a great solution. So I might sound like Pollyanna right now, but I feel good and I feel loved, and I'm really, really, really excited that that happened, so thanks. The one thing that I do want to say, and this is kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Ellis's comment earlier, is that I would really ask the everybody, from the top to the building administrators, to all the faculty, really err on the side of over-inclusion with regards to both kids that are in the hybrid model that are learning from their homes on their designated day to the 100% distance learners. Really ask that teachers really internalize this. And please, just think of every single teaching opportunity as a way to include people rather than, you know, not. So even, you know, I heard one administrator say that homeroom is just not something that that's going to be included for distance learners. And I would urge you to just reconsider that, because homeroom is so important. Rug time is important, show and tell is important, you know, birthday celebrations are important to forming a community. So if you could please, you know, really have that trickle down to every single faculty member to just err on the side of inclusion. And when they're teaching and people are in hybrid at home or in their full 100% distance learning, let them, let them hear the teacher, let the teacher include them, rather than, you know, half of the class watching a video and half of the class being instructed by the teacher. To really please have the teacher make an effort to have as much actual instruction as possible. So that would be fabulous, if you could, and I'm sure you will, because you've been so great so far. I'm sure you will help the rest of the staff figure out how to do this. And the last thing is, is something I've talked about. It would be so unbelievably wonderful if the teachers could just have a uniform communication approach, that I know that like, every week, I will, you know, receive report X from a teacher. And I'm not trying to give them more work, but it would really facilitate the conversation in an already kind of very, very unique and difficult environment. So that's just my comment. It would be really, really wonderful if they could really err on the side of over-including, and if there could be a systemized way that every parent knows their teacher will communicate with them on a regular timeline. Okay, I hope I didn't take up my three minutes.
You left 10 seconds, so thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if you could just please think about that and think about ways to end it, and I'd love to hear about it, so thank you.
Absolutely. I would say, Eugenia, thank you very much for the positive feedback and then the constructive feedback as well. I would say the work that grew out of our SEL, Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee, focused on the concept of building community. But that building of community was inclusive of both students engaged in distance learning and students that are physically present in the classroom. So despite the fact that kids will be separated by cohort or separated by cohort and the distance learning option, that is going to be a very deliberate effort to ensure that everyone is included. You provided the example of a birthday celebration. There's many opportunities where our classes are going to come together as a complete unit and family throughout the school year. I think your feedback related to communication is valuable, and it actually draws my mind back to a slide in my meeting with faculty, I think it was last week, that spoke to the suggestions in and around communication. I trust that our principals are going to do an excellent job in collaborating with their faculty members on those systems. And so our hope is that you will fall into patterns of systemized communication with your children's teachers, that you will be regularly engaged in receiving updates about their progress and events associated with their class.
Thank you so much. And just one more wish list, if maybe, and I know this is a lot, so I'm just putting it out there. If maybe, if maybe each of the four administrators could just have a very brief Zoom meeting with, to explain how distance learning will be incorporated. how distance learning will be incorporated. We would really love that as a community and greatly appreciate efforts. I know that there's a lot.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay, sorry. Well, just putting that there. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Next, we have Amy Chen, 160 Field Point.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for taking my question. My question is on the commitment that you asked for, for the remote and the hybrid to commit for the marking period. Now, as you mentioned, the district is, is ready to go 100% remote if needed. And I would imagine the hybrid parents, if they feel the risk increase, they might very well pull their kids out before the school district fully goes. And they can, in practice, probably just do it and, you know, the kid have sniffles, right? And they'll be staying home. So in a sense, they are, they might, they're not even being asked to commit and they have a free option to go remote. But the remote folks are asked to commit for the marking period. And you've planned actually for the school to reopen with all the kids, right? And the cohorts are flexible enough that if the kids want to slot back, it really shouldn't be any undue stress. So I don't see why the all remote folks have to commit for the marking period.
Thank you.
So I would hope individuals would certainly not try to play a system and I certainly don't want to wish ill upon anybody, literally and figuratively here. And I'm not one that thinks that you could be play with karma. I, I would hope that folks are true to process and that if someone is legitimately sick, we will be dealing with that. And if someone is displaying symptoms that are COVID related, those individuals would be referred for COVID testing. So our hope is that if someone was ill, we will have true medical documentation. Otherwise, they will be attending school. If an individual has health needs that surface that have to give us other considerations, we're not going to be silly. We're going to contemplate that. However, if we're looking at situations that arise environmentally where we're seeing greater risks or greater concerns for the health and safety of our students and staff in school, I, I'm the one that makes that decision and I hope that we would be in a position that we're going to be responding responsibly and we're going to make a decision for all of our children. You know, I, I'm not going to say that we're not going to have any kind of flexibility, but we have to have a system that we can manage. And that certainly this is the model that we introduced and we will learn by our experiences. And if we need to make modifications down the road, we'll do so. You've seen that from me throughout the summer with all aspects of this plan. And if we need to reconsider that, we will. But at this point in time, it's a commitment that we've asked our community members to make, whether you're staying in the in-person hybrid learning model, or if you are 100% distance learning, we're asking to make that commitment for an entire marking period. And when we near the end of that marking period, we'll communicate with the school community and provide that opportunity for you to switch. If there's reason to think that we should modify that process, we will contemplate it and I will share my, my thinking with the school community and share any potential revisions to the process. But as of now, we're going to proceed with the model that has been outlined.
Okay, I do appreciate you keeping an open mind because if miraculously things are working very well in October, I mean, why wait the full 60 days marking period, right? And alternatively, it's not really gaming the system if all of a sudden the risk changed to the other end and the hybrid folks decide, well, you know, is 5% infection rate too high for me? Is 10% too high for me? I think those parents certainly should have the flexibility to opt the other way into 100% as well. So thank you very much for considering.
Thank you. Next, Larry O'Grodnick, 15 Dootcher.
Hi. Yeah, thanks. I just want to say thanks so much, Dr. Harrison, for clarifying the commitment to giving families that are fully remote the same quality of education as the partial remote students. I know it's really reassuring to many families. Obviously, it's been incredibly challenging time and so much has been changing week from week. It seems like every meeting, there's a slight change in the plan and things are moving very quickly. I think everyone's done an amazing job keeping up with all the challenges as well as, you know, keeping families really informed and also incorporating the feedback from families has been really great. Obviously, there'll be a lot of other changes throughout the school year. This is going to be a pretty abnormal year for everyone, families, teachers, administrators. And so I'm wondering, you know, as we go throughout the year, what is going to be the forum where families can provide feedback on how things are going? Will we keep the reopening committee open? If so, how long? It feels like it would make sense to keep it open for longer to make sure that, again, you know, families will have an opportunity to hear about changes that are coming. You know, even the last few weeks, there's been so many changes as things are developing and I expect that they continue. Also, it'd be great if we could get additional representation on the committee. I know that as a lot of people have expressed, there's a lot of different learning experiences going to be going on. There are people that would be, you know, partially remote, fully remote, and then, you know, the K one split. It'd be great if we could get people from those different communities, you know, more incorporated into the reopening committee. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Larry, very much. We anticipate facilitating surveys throughout the, the course of the school year to be able to gather feedback formally from school community. As I have been throughout this entire process, I'll share the results of the, those surveys very transparently with the school community. We do plan on keeping the, the committees intact and really meeting on a as-hoc basis. I, I think your suggestions about revisiting the makeup of those committees is, is a good one. One that we did do when we looked at the K one option and that we added a couple more parents to it, we made sure there was greater representation from the dazzling community. But, you know, that was looking specifically at that one particular initiative. If we step back and we look more globally and now we have different types of, of families, shall we say, in that those that are, you know, 100% distance learning, those that are going to be in the new K one model, those that are going to be in the hybrid model, I think there's, there's value in making sure that we have representation of folks that are having those experiences on the various committees as, as we move along. So I, I think it's good feedback and something that we'll have to contemplate as we move forward.
Okay, thanks so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Meyer, 10 Cedar Lawn Road.
Hi, this is Josh Meyer. First, I wanted to thank all of you. I know we've been doing a lot of thanking of you, but you really deserve it. The board, the administration, the school level administration, faculty, for all you've been doing. It's really appreciated. We're one of the families that have selected the 100% remote option. And obviously, and I wanted to thank Erin for bringing up the point that it's not really a choice in a way. And it was something we struggled with. And we were struggling with some of the ways some of this had been communicated. And I really wanted to thank Dr. Harrison and everyone else for the, the change and the way you were describing it tonight. As, as Eugenia said, we know it was very reassuring to hear that. And we're really happy and I continue to be impressed with the way the district has incorporated feedback from the community in adapting these plans. I know everything's changing a lot. And, you know, I really wanted to just thank you all for that. And say, you know, we're really looking forward to continuing to work with you to make this as successful a year as we can. So that's, I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we
Josh, if I, I want to thank you and you know, I, I want to acknowledge the fact that there certainly was a pivot in, in the way that I was communicating around the topic 100% distance learning. And, and I heard my own words through the feedback that was being received and, and I was portraying it in a way that wasn't fair to the experience that kids were going to have. It wasn't accurate necessarily to the experience that kids were going to have. And I didn't want to come across as what seemed to be defensive of the in-person experience and not being empathetic enough to the, the challenges that individual families were, were, were facing. So frankly, when we think about this experience, it was, there was a time of reflection and, and a period of growth for me in that process. And I, I appreciate the feedback that led me there. And, and, and I think my leadership and change in direction that we took in the district really came out of the experiences that I shared in engaging with the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barry Lynch, 66 Paulding Ave.
Barry, you should be able to speak now. Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, apologies for that. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking my question. So the way I understand it, the, the model currently stands that children placed in ICT classes are in either Cohort A or B. But children with IEPs in those classes, that they have various different needs, require various different levels of, of support. And has the district considered looking at children with IEPs in, in that ICT setting with greater needs, with more in-person time? Dr. Harrison, you've said on many occasions that this is optimal. And these are our most vulnerable students. I think it's appropriate to look at, at perhaps giving them more in-person time if, if they have greater needs. Those kids with IEPs and, and ICT settings have, have greater needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly we consider, continue to consider all the experiences and needs of all of our students. At the moment, we've looked to students that are enrolled in self-contained classes based upon their IEPs. And we've had, we have extended that opportunity for them to participate in onsite learning four days per week. At this point in time, we have not completed a thorough evaluation to determine if we're able to support the needs of a wider array of students to be able to do that while maintaining the required social distancing that is necessitated in all of our classrooms because it would in some, it would throw cohorts out of balance and potentially have classrooms where we wouldn't be able to provide the safe distancing that is needed. If there's a, you know, interest from a particular family to contemplate placements in a self-contained class that already exists in one of our schools, if there is one that would certainly match the, the learner's profile and, and IEP objectives, that is something that could potentially be contemplated by reaching out to Ms. Krieger or Ms. O'Brien to schedule a CSE meeting or to have an informal conversation to see if that is a, an option before you at, at this point in time. However, when we're thinking, and I understand your point about ICT classes having a wide range of needs for students, the challenge is being able to accommodate every single student need to be able to address that four day model. So my, my, my recommendation would be to have conversation with the PPS administration and school principal to contemplate whether or not one of the special classes would be a match for your child if there's availability. And if so, start the, the process for that conversation.
And just to clarify, would that require a formal reeval or could it just be done due to exceptional circumstances at the moment?
Every situation, as you know, is unique. What I would suggest is having the, the outreach, outreach to PPS leadership for the informal conversation to see where there may be a match there that may lead to, to opportunity that ultimately could be something as simple as a CSE meeting if it was the appropriate setting. But I think there would need to be a conversation to allow, have, make sure that your desires align with what the program would provide. Just four days a week may not mean that the, the academics, the social emotional component of the program would meet your child's particular needs. But I would suggest it's worth a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Snyder, 61 Havermeier Road.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I realize it's a difficult time for logistics and planning. But um, the existence that cohorts, whether morning versus evening or Monday, Tuesday versus Thursday, Friday, based on alphabetical splits on the student's surname seems somewhat arbitrary. I've heard from different people in the community that this has caused some difficulty with respect to arranging their childcare transportation. So I'm just wondering why there's no flexibility to exchange students between cohorts when you have students who have similar demographic characteristics who might be offsetting and would move from one cohort to the other.
I, I think we, we spoke to this early in the process that we had to establish a system by which students were going to be assigned to a particular cohort. The logic in looking at doing it alphabetically certainly wasn't arbitrary and was very strategic in the sense of looking at siblings and wanting them to be on similar schedules and routines for a family. So if you, one child was Cohort A, the other child would be Cohort A and family would follow a similar schedule. The, the challenge that, that I, that I honestly see, and, and Mark, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, is that it really becomes a rabbit hole and that it becomes a card, a card game and, and sitting there and managing swaps back and forth, it creates a scenario where we are managing something that is going to take our eye off the ball. It's going to take our attention off providing a safe environment for your child. It's going to take attention away from our ability to be able to provide the best level of instruction possible for your child, whether it be in Cohort A or Cohort B. And, and frankly, I worry about equity. I don't want us to arrive in a situation where we have de facto leveling beginning to occur in our elementary school because of the shifting that's happening between cohorts or any levels of segregation that could potentially occur because we put great effort and great care into how our classes are created. And I want to respect that process and the work of our teachers and our administrators. And I worry about the unintended consequences. And I don't want to come across as being cavalier, but unintended consequences that would come out of something that would be perceived as a convenience for some. And, and not an opportunity that would be provided to every student whose parents didn't have the courage or the ability to step up and make such a request. So I'm sorry if it's not a satisfying answer, but I think it is principle based and one that I, that I need to stand by to make sure that all students in our school community have the same opportunity from day to day in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I'm not seeing anyone else who has queued up for questions. So I'll give everyone just another brief moment if you'd like to make a comment. Otherwise, I, I will say that our next meeting is September 8th here at 7:30. Obviously, as everyone is who's here with us, it means where there'll be a lot of communication coming out between now and then as we move closer to reopening. So everyone, please continue to check your email for communications, both from Dr. Harrison as well as the principals of your particular buildings where your children will be students. So with that, if we can, if I could, we got a couple last people, so we'll take these last two. And then we will close public comments. We have Stephanie Fonseca, 25 Eiler Lane.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm not sure if you heard me before, but thank you all for everything that you're doing. I have two questions. One is non-COVID related. Would it, would you consider continuing to have these board meetings on Zoom? I have found it very helpful not to have to physically go into the CPR room for these meetings. So just for the future, when we hopefully eventually get out of this. So just for the future, when we hopefully eventually get out of this situation. And the second question I have, and I don't know if you have an opportunity to already have an answer, but could you describe a little bit about what those two and a half hours or two hours and 45 minutes of the K-1 experience will look like? Will there, will they have specials at that time as well as core curriculum? If you could speak a little bit about that?
Sure. Each building has developed grade level schedules and at, at the K-1 level, the schedule will include core academics as well as specials. It was a question that came up earlier. We have an obligation in terms of a, a full and rich curriculum to offer those specials. And I'll tell you that I personally feel very strongly that it's a very important part of a child's education and a child's development. So each building, we have published schedules, there are sample schedules up on the website and principals can be providing you with more detailed schedules of what the days look like.
Thank you so much.
Stephanie, with respect to the facilitation of future meetings, whether Zoom or other format, at minimum livestream is one consideration before us right now. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge as we get there, as you can see, only the second meeting in this format. And we, you know, first meeting went flawless and we had a couple tech glitches tonight. So we want to make sure we have the capacity to be able to support it on an ongoing basis. We have lots of staff that rally around us to make this happen. And we just need to make sure that it's manageable moving forward. And at this moment, it's a good opportunity for me to give some accolades to Evan Gross and Jay Strumawser, who are behind the scenes at every single one of these Board of Education meetings that go into the late hours of the night and going well beyond their typical workday to be able to support us. So we need to make sure it's manageable, but you know, we do see the conveniences. Like, you know, we know all aspects of world, life is changing. This may be one of them for us here in Irvington.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Byfield, 3 Maple Street.
Kathy, you should be able to speak now.
Mrs. Byfield, could you try speaking? I think we lost her, Jay.
Kathy, can you try speaking? I see you, but I, I can't see you speaking.
Yeah. All right. I'm sorry that we can't hear you. Maybe if you want to send us an email, we certainly will respond to your, your question via email.
Thank you. So with, with that, if I could have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Good night.